Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 6th, 2021 Gilbert Council Meeting. Can we start with a pledge of allegiance? Vice Mayor?
We would like to invite all of the girls in Girl Scout Troop 4126 to the front of the room, and I'll come down and meet you in just a second. Perfect. I would love your help in saying the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Can you help me do that? Yeah? Do you all know the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah.
We're gonna look at the flag. Put your hand over your heart. Okay, say it with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wonderful, thank you. We'd like to introduce all of you to the audience. Can you stay up here? Come here. Stay over here. Line up. Can you say your name and how old you are?
My name is Lily and I'm seven years old.
My name is Ayla and I'm five years old.
My, wait, do I take a line mask?
Yes.
My name is Audrey and I'm eight years old.
I am Clara and I'm seven years old.
I am Mama and I am seven years old.
I am Arabella and I am seven years old.
I'm Sophia and I'm eight years old.
I am Chloe and I'm seven years old.
I'm JoJo and I'm seven years old.
Thank you so much for being here, Girl Scout Troop 4126.
Did they bring any cookies?
That's a great question, councilmember. Thank you for coming tonight, girls. It was a pleasure to meet you and talk to you upstairs. Take home that Gilbert kindness chalk and make some beautiful pictures in your driveway and on your sidewalks. Boy, I have to say, it's fun to have some kids back in the chamber here and be able to do, have them lead the pledge with us tonight. We haven't seen that for quite some time. Now, I would like to invite Tyler Hudgens from Redemption Gilbert Church to lead us in the invocation.
Heavenly Father, in the scriptures, you have said that the citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. For it says in Romans 13:1, "Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established." Therefore, I pray for our mayor, Bridget Peterson, our councilmembers, and for the various levels of town staff. I'm asking God that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time. God, I pray that you would give them courage to make the decisions that are needed for the ultimate good of our community. And God, that they would be gracious and self-sacrificing towards our neighbors, that they would have a sense of welfare and true needs of the people, and a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. That they would model civility in an age when people need more examples of it, and that they would have personal peace in their lives and the lives of their families. Jesus, you said that he didn't, that you didn't come to be served, but to serve. I pray that we would model that as we seek the good of our neighbors in bringing about good government and good laws. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around Gilbert. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Tyler, you've held many roles in this community. Is this the first time that you've done an invocation for the council?
This, this is my first time, and it's a pleasure to be here. And God's just putting, been putting a lot on my heart in pursuing ministry and being a pastor and just applied to seminary. And so, it's a privilege to be here to pray with you guys as a member of the community. I can just say from the people at Redemption and the leadership there, we love this town, we love our leadership, and we're just thankful for everything you guys are doing.
Thank you, and we love our faith leaders, and we look forward to seeing you regularly presenting the invocation for us here on behalf of Redemption Gilbert Church.
Thank you, Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Thank you, Tyler. Have a great night. Next, can I have the clerk do the roll call, please?
Mayor Bridget Peterson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Young Kaprowski?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks?
Present.
Councilmember Scott September?
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke?
Here.
And Councilmember Amy Yentus?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. We had one proclamation that was issued and not presented during a council meeting, and that was the proclamation declaring the month of February 2021 as Go Red for Women Month, and many of us are dressed in red tonight. We didn't even send out a note, but we kind of all knew just to wear our red in support of that. And our next presentation is the annual update by the Gilbert Sister Cities Board, and I saw Greg Tilke here. And if you'd like to come down to the podium, Greg, it's always a pleasure to have you here to talk about Gilbert Sister Cities.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, members of the council. Greg Tilke, President of Gilbert Sister Cities. As always, it's a pleasure to be here to give our annual update on our program. For those of you not aware, the Sister Cities Initiative was started in 1956, way back when, by President Eisenhower, because he felt strongly that you could do better, better communications person-to-person than you could government-to-government. I think that's proven right many times over. Our program was started in 1995, and we have two Sister City relationships, one in Antrim and Newton Abbey, Northern Ireland, which we began in 1998, and one in LaShawn, China, which was started in 2002. One of the mainstays of our organization's programming is our Youth Ambassador Program, which we started with Antrim, Newton Abbey in 2000 and LaShawn in 2010. And over that time period, we have exchanged a total of 140 students between both of our partner cities, which is pretty life-changing event for not only the students but the families. We get reports every year after the trip of how the families experienced something they had never thought they would experience by learning from their, the other student. Our very own councilmember Yentus was our exchange student back in 2005 and traveled to Northern Ireland. Given my background in economic development, we also work with the town staff to develop business relationships between our Gilbert businesses and those in Northern Ireland and China. Over the years, we've had businesses from both of our sister cities visit Gilbert, and we've also taken delegations of businesses to both cities to see what opportunities might exist abroad. Most recently, Antrim and Newton Abbey sent about 15 businesses to Gilbert a couple years ago to kind of restart that process, and they made some great connections. In fact, one of those, if you've been out to the regional park, you've seen, one of the companies that came to visit makes solar-powered benches, and you can plug your phone into it while you're at the park. They put it in the play area so families can plug in while they're watching the kids. They can sit and have their phone plugged in and charged, taking pictures and so on. And so, we've also, and that's been a great addition to the park. We've also had some staff exchanges, exchanges with Newton Abbey and at the city level to look at best practices in government, both ways. In addition, we've developed lifelong relationships and friendships with officials in both Antrim, Newton Abbey, and LaShawn. I don't need to tell you that 2020 was a very challenging year for everyone on many fronts, and Gilbert Sister Cities was no different. Like many organizations, we had to cancel a number of events last year, and at least for the first half of 2021. Unfortunately, for the four students we chose last year to go to participate in our Youth Ambassador Program, we had to cancel that too because of the pandemic. We did offer those students the opportunity to travel this coming summer to Antrim, Newton Abbey. That's all going to be dependent, of course, on how the pandemic works itself out. We hope they'll be able to go because it's quite an experience, as Councilmember Yentus can attest. We also had a delegation visit planned in, to Antrim, Newton Abbey in April of 2020, and we had a number of businesses lined up to participate in that visit, of course. COVID put a stop to that, but the good news is the businesses I've talked to still want to go when it's safe to do so, so we're looking forward to taking maybe those and more businesses back in the future. The start of 2021 looks very similar to 2020 in that we couldn't hold our annual East-West Gilbert Fest, which is kind of our celebration of the Chinese culture and normal events associated with our Youth Ambassador Program. But we've also, and we also had to cancel our Spring Tea, which has been a popular program we started a couple years back. I am very excited about some exchanges we made to our Sister Cities Board. We've added five new members, got some new blood in there, and planning, we're having a planning session coming up on February 27th to strategize to see what we need to do more of to move the organization forward in these challenging times. One of our big items for the coming year is the development of the Sister Cities Garden, and that planning is currently underway with town staff. In fact, I just responded to them today with some potential, a potential site. And we want to take advantage of the time we are in in the next few months to refocus our efforts to tell Gilbert Sister Cities story, because we think more people need to be aware of what we're doing, and especially for the students that are participating. Our Sister Cities abroad have also had their challenges this past year. Antrim, Newton Abbey is in the process of another minor shutdown. I think they're going to be shut down for the next couple weeks. And by the way, some of you know Councilmember Fraser Agnew over there. He's been on many trips over to Gilbert. They are celebrating his 40th year, if any of you can understand that, believe that, on their council this year. And in the coming weeks, Mayor Peterson and I will be filming a short congratulations video on behalf of Gilbert to be used at the ceremony there, planning for late March to honor his service to their community. Looking forward to that. The situation is somewhat different in LaShawn, where they had problems early on, of course, and now things are pretty much opened up again and coming back strong. I have to say, I appreciate the many contributions of our new council liaison to Gilbert Sister Cities, Councilmember Tilke. She brings many years of involvement. She was on the board a couple different times. She's been always involved, whether or not she wanted to be or not. She was involved through our association there, and she's been multiple visits to both our Sister Cities, so feel confident she'll represent you very well following Mayor Peterson, when she was our liaison the last few years. And thanks to all of you who have supported Sister Cities over the years. It really means a lot to us, it's very much appreciated, and the Sister Cities concept of bringing the world closer is needed now more than ever. We do have a short video message from Mayor and Deputy Mayor of Newton, Antrim and Newton Abbey that we want to share with you, but before I do, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmembers, any questions for Greg Tilke?
I have one.
Oh, Scott.
Where's the garden site that we're talking about? Where's the proposal?
Well, the one that we, the board liked, we all took a vote yesterday, is out at the region, the new regional park next to the lake down, not next to the amphitheater, but down around the corner. I think it'd be a real, real good opportunity for us to have events out there, and so we're gonna, we're starting the planning here. We're gonna go out and do a site visit with our group next week or two.
I love that opportunity, and Greg, I'm looking forward to making that video for Fraser. Forty years is quite the accomplishment. And this video that we're going to show, I think, was filmed in December prior to me being seated as mayor here.
Yes, it does say Mayor-elect Peterson, so yeah, it was filmed, I think they thought we were going to do it earlier, and they got it done, so it dates a couple months, but it's still very relevant.
Yes, it's great to hear from our friend.
Any other questions I can address?
No.
May I make a comment?
Sure, of course.
Thank you for coming and giving us an update, Greg. I just wanted to make a comment, which was back when, you know, I was a participant as a student delegate. That was 2005. You know, there, even though the town of Gilbert was a great community, we really didn't have a lot to kind of, I guess, show our students here. I mean, we had to plan a lot of trips, you know, the Grand Canyon, and we, and I'm sure students still do that, but it is kind of tremendous to think that now when students come over, we have so much right here in our hometown that you can keep them occupied and entertained, and so much, you know, culture to kind of entertain a young 16-year-old, so it's pretty neat.
Yeah, the biggest challenge we have is making sure they put enough sunscreen on, because they tend to not remember to do that.
And they always want a hamburger.
Yeah, that's right.
They always want a hamburger, yes. Who's running that video for us? Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
Monica, we are ready for you. Thank you.
I'm Councilor Jim Montgomery, Mayor of Antrim, Newton Abbey, and I'm honored to send you this filling message today in commemoration of the centenary of the town of Gilbert. From humble beginnings in July 1920, as a small farmers' town, Gilbert is now fast-growing, safe, and innovative town. This group is a testament to the leadership of the town council and manager, Patrick Bradjeff. As a councilor behind the Newton Abbey Borough Council for five years, I heard only good reports of the relationship that has been developed between our respective areas. We have developed languages and student exchange, economic development, and above all, created friendships that have resulted in such a truly remarkable relationship. Unfortunately, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you. From my party colleague, Alderman Paul Michael, I spoke importantly about the welcome he received when he had a joint civic and trade delegation to Gilbert in November 2018. It's my hope that when the work returns to normality, that we will be able to resume our friendship in person. Finally, I would also like to congratulate Mary-Lac Peterson.
I apologize. I think we're gonna try to play it from the lectern and see if that works better.
Thank you.
If that's okay, thank you.
I'm Councilor Jim Montgomery, Mayor of Antrim, Newton Abbey, and I'm honored to send you this filling message today in commemoration of the centenary of the town of Gilbert. From humble beginnings in July 1920, as a small farmers' town, Gilbert is now fast-growing, safe, and innovative town. This group is a testament to the leadership of the town council and manager, Patrick As a councilor behind the Newton Abbey Borough Council for five years, I heard only good reports of the relationship that has been developed between our respective areas. We have developed languages and student exchange, economic development, and above all, created friendships that have resulted in such a truly remarkable relationship. Unfortunately, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you. From my party colleague, Alderman Paul Michael, I spoke importantly about the welcome he received when he had a joint civic and trade delegation to Gilbert in November 2018. It is my hope that when the work returns to normality, that we will be able to resume our friendship in person. Finally, I would also like to congratulate Mary-Lac Peterson on your recent election. I wish you the very best when you assume your role in early January, and I look forward to working with you.
Good morning, Gilbert. I believe that those watching this will already know me, but for those that may not, I'm Councilor Lloyd McClelland, Deputy Mayor of Antrim, Newton Abbey, and I would like to echo the mayor's words in commemoration of the centenary of Gilbert. As a councilor of Antrim, Newton Abbey Borough Council, for almost 20 years now, I have been fortunate to visit Gilbert on two occasions and witnessed firsthand the sustained growth and innovation that has occurred in Gilbert. I've also welcomed friends from the town council and board of the Sister City to Antrim and Newton Abbey on numerous occasions, and therefore, I look forward to doing so again. The work of the Sister City Board has been instrumental in creating and developing the relationship that spans over 20 years now. I would also like to warmly congratulate my friend, Mary-Lac Bridget, on her recent election. Hopefully, Bridget, you have had some time to rest and recover from what must have been an extremely busy, but of course, rewarding time. I wish you the very best when you assume your role in early January, and I'm confident that you will do an excellent job for the town and the residents of Gilbert.
Greg, thank you for recommending that we play that during this meeting. I really appreciate it. And to the mayor and deputy mayor, I will send them a note. They're just wonderful people. We've had such a great relationship with them, and I look forward to continuing that and look forward to the day that we can make a trip over there, that's for sure. Next, and thank you, Greg, again, for coming and presenting tonight on behalf of the board. Next, we'll move into communications from citizens, and I will pass the baton to our vice mayor.
At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town but that are not placed on the agenda. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. We do have 14 people that would like to speak tonight. We'll provide each person two minutes. We do ask that everyone observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Please, no clapping or shouting, and just let everyone speak in order as they are called forward. Would be greatly appreciated. We're gonna begin with Tom Patterson. Please come to the podium, speak directly into the microphone so we can hear you loud and clear, and state your name and place of residence.
Hello, I am Tom Patterson. I live at 241 East Hemlock Avenue. I have a few thing, I'm here to discuss the sewer project on the canal, a few new things. I know we're anxiously awaiting that meeting that was discussed last town council where we could meet with you. I know there are other options that are less expensive than purchasing our lands, and I'd like to view those other options, and I feel that this is an invasion of our rights and privacies of, as landowners. Thank you.
Next will be Julia McCleary. McCleve, I apologize. Julia McCleve.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson and council. My name is Julia McCleve. I live at 436 North Honeysuckle Lane, just down the street in Gilbert. I, my husband and I have lived in Gilbert for almost 50 years. We love it. I do think we're close to natives, but my concern is, of course, the wastewater project. I know, you know that's why we're here. I, I just have some concerns. I don't understand the procedural thing of this, because you've spent over a quarter million dollars just to have somebody come out and talk to us. And I was told by your staff when he came by that you did not need, there were several options. You only had to use, if you'd taken the one option, we wouldn't be here, because there wasn't going to be added expense to the town. But I think when our homeowners, and I think there's 24 lots are involved, we have such a diverse group of homes and needs and wants there. So I really hope that you'll table this at some point and come and talk to the neighbors and, and talk to your staff, because I truly do not understand why we're not taking an option that makes everybody happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Victor McCleve.
Mayor Peterson, members of the council. Julia said what I was gonna tell you, so I, I'm not gonna have to, but I, I just remembered one thing that I was gonna remind the council, and I know you all know this much better than I do. I understood that the town of Gilbert has a policy against condemning land. I, I, I don't know exactly what it is, and, but I know you guys do, so please take a look at that. And what my wife said, I think is a very wise thing, and it'd make everybody on our side feel very comfortable if you did, in fact, table this, this, I don't even know what you call it, sewer ma, sewer plant program. Thank you very much and appreciate it. Bye.
Next, we'll hear from Arlon Lewis.
My name is Arlon, my name is Arlon Lewis. I live at 420 North Honeysuckle. As has been stated, we're all here talking about the sewer program. The council chose the last option of the three that were presented to them, the prior council, apparently. They chose the most expensive, by far, the longest construction time, by far, the most infringing on personal rights, personal property rights, by far. They chose the option to condemn private property, demolish existing fences, build new fences. the option to condemn private property, demolish existing fences, build new fences, and then repair the sewer. The plan that was chosen seeks to take away from me and my family nearly an acre of my land. Why you need an acre of my land to fix a 24-inch sewer line is baffling at best. As has been stated by the town employees and others, the sewer can be repaired using cast-in-place methods from manhole to manhole without infringing on personal property rights. Now a lot has been said about access, four of the, I believe, seven or eight manholes that are involved in this project are on my property, they lie in the middle of my southern pasture, you can drive a semi truck up to all four of them, access is not a problem, not a concern. Town of Gilbert has asked and received permission to access these on numerous occasions, as has SRP, never a problem. I would hope that one of you would approve, would propose tabling this project until you have all the facts, not just what you've been fed by your whoever, and mayor, we need to meet, thank you.
Our next speakers will be Omar and Arum Hamid.
Good evening Mayor Peterson, council members, my name is Omar Hamid, I live on Honeysuckle Lane in Gilbert, I've been living in Gilbert for 21 years, and the people that you see behind me are 24 neighbors, we're going to keep coming here every two weeks until this issue resolved, I will reiterate what I said last week, but I'll keep seeing it, so this is in regards to the 1060 concrete pipe sewer project, again, the project was commenced without any feedback or a public hearing from the property owners directly affected by this project, instead the town of Gilbert opted to pay Jacobs Engineering quarter million dollars, the 24 property owners located on Honeysuckle Commerce in East Hemlock Avenue, again, are more than willing to give the town of Gilbert permission to access our properties for the purpose of repairing the sewer line. Our proposal does not cost the town of Gilbert any money, and still gets the project complete. The town of Gilbert current proposal proposes buying land from homeowners, which will be expensive, in addition to the quarter million you guys already paid to Jacobs Engineering, and the, if the town of Gilbert thinks that they can just buy the land for pennies on the dollar, that's not going to happen, because we have other options, and it'll wind up costing the town of Gilbert a lot more money than the town of Gilbert, the bureaucrats have already told you, so, we are again very kindly requesting the mayor, the town council members, to have a meeting with the property owners, we were promised such a meeting at the previous meeting and nothing ever happened, the property owners affected by this project will keep applying consistent pressure to make sure the town of Gilbert comes and meets with us, with other bureaucrats, and here's what we have to say, thank you.
Our next speaker will be Ron Coon.
Mayor, town council, thanks for letting us speak tonight, I'm one of those neighbors, those 24, I just want to tell you a couple things, I've owned my property for 30 years, and we bought it because it's acreage, and my wife and my autistic daughter, they have their horses on our acreage, one of the problems with this proposal is it'll shut off our backside, where we have feed trucks and stuff bringing all of our hay and stuff to the barn, so that's a challenge there, that if we can't have our feed and hay delivered, we've got a problem there, also, my wife and autistic daughter go out the back there to ride up and down those power lines, so we, once again, we enjoy our property, we've lived in Gilbert a long time, and we really like Gilbert, what they want to do to my land is they, I've got a barn that is setback 15 feet from the, from the back fence, the setback, and they want to take 17 feet of my property, and of course that'll go into the barn, so we're just, we're just really concerned to how that would all work out, so once again, we're just so distraught, my wife and daughter, my wife would be here, but she's over in Germany, my daughters gave birth over there, one of my daughters, but anyway, so I'm here to speak for my wife and daughter, and once again, my neighbors, we would just like to table this and shelf it, and let's, let's sit down and see if we can get a better solution, thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be Linda Ratliff. Thank you Linda, Linda's going to pass, because everything has been said that she wanted to say. Our next speaker is Kirk Nelson.
We're Kirk and Devon Nelson, and we live at 249 East Hemlock, and we would like to request that you please rethink this project, and allow us to continue to keep our property, using the gates that have always been open to you, and was agreed upon by the town SRP and the homeowners in a previous time. Let us know what we can do to move, to make better accommodations, your needs to have access to the sewer and water lines, allow us to be your eyes, ears, and nose on the ground, we as property owners would be much better at seeing, hearing, and smelling a problem than the town workers that drive past in a truck. In 1985, the town told us that they were just asking for the rights to put the sewer line through, they would not take our property, please rethink taking our land, working together, we could make this a win-win for both parties, you allowing us to help, and you honoring the agreements that have been made in the past. We have been here since 1979, and we were here when roads didn't even go through, Lindsey stopped at the canal, Burke was a dirt trail that stopped at Juniper, and Gilbert Road was two lanes. We have always supported Gilbert, we have worked hard to make Gilbert the town that the people want to come and live in, our sons did Eagle Projects in Gilbert Parks, we have led scout groups, I have personally three blue ribbons from floats that I was in charge of for the Gilbert Days Parade, we have been here, we have stood up for Gilbert, we have honored Gilbert, but we feel like our needs and matters are not being honored at this time, please rethink taking our land in this land grab that is being labeled as a repair to the sewer line, thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker Cole Ratliff.
My name is Cole Ratliff, I live at 525 East Commerce, I am here to talk about how the town of Gilbert is abusing their power in order to acquire land. The sewer line that runs along my backyard is also located in Gilbert Road Self-Storage, the self-storage business will be exempt from the town acquiring any of their land. My property and the self-storage have the same amount of access that is needed in order to repair these sewer lines. Why would my neighbors and I have to lose our land when a business down the canal is allowed to keep theirs? We are not being treated equally in this, and it's just not fair. The other day I looked up on a satellite map where the storage facility is, and there's actually more access in my backyard than in that business complex, so access, that doesn't make any sense, if there's more access in my backyard, but you're willing to let them keep theirs, there's something wrong there, thank you.
Our next speaker will be Victoria Schaefer.
Hi, I'm Victoria Schaefer, thank you for hearing me today, I live at 261 East Hemlock Avenue, and I think I'm probably the newest member here in, or property owner here in Gilbert, I purchased my home in April of last year, and fully renovated it before moving in, I also refinanced in November to improve my backyard, and let me be clear, I bought my property for my backyard, I have two small doggies that love to run around, and this was going to be my forever home, but because I have purchased so recently, I have had, and also had a refi, I've had my property appraised twice, and I've never once heard about this land acquisition that's coming, I understand that the project was inseminated in 2017, so how I was even able to purchase my property without being advised of the sewer project is beyond me, and this land acquisition is going to wreck me, I'm a single woman in my 50s, and again, I purchased this to be my forever home. There's some questions that we have, you've heard most of our concerns already, but that's one big one for me, how could this happen to us, why did we not know about this project in 2017 when it started, why was I able to purchase my land without being made aware of this by the town of Gilbert, and there's inconsistencies about the, about the project as well, again, there were three options made available, and why was this one chosen, the only one that had to do with the seizure of our land, there were three other options available, so we're begging you, choose a different option, it's not necessary for you to acquire our land, so, the only other question that I really have is that we were also made aware by Jason Montgomery, that there is a beautification project that will be happening at the end of the sewer project, to beautify the trail that's behind our homes, so if the acquisition takes place, you'll be taking a third of my property, and the wall that you're talking about placing will be 20 feet from my bedroom window, 20 feet from my kitchen, and if your beautification project is the ultimate goal, to have more people able to walk along that property behind our wall along the canal, what kind of living are we going to have, what kind of safety, peace, security is going to be allowed to our property when we've got more people walking back there, we've heard that there's going to possibly even be an open market back there, and what kind of a lifestyle are we going to have with all of that going on back there, so those are our concerns, and thank you for hearing me.
Our next speaker will be Stacy Adams.
Mayor Peterson, town council members, I'm Stacy Adams, I live at 573 East Commerce Avenue. Mayor Peterson, last meeting you said that you heard us, and that you would grant us an audience, and that we don't need to keep coming.
Closer to the mic please Stacy.
Thanks, last meeting you said that you heard us, and that we don't need to keep coming to these meetings, we're not going anywhere. We love our town, and we implore you to look at the proposal that the wastewater department gave to you. The spend of likely more than $2 million in acquisition costs is not a wise nor prudent way to spend taxpayer dollars. The neighbors and I are more than willing to allow access for an extended period of time to do the sleeve-in-place cured bonded project that you are going to have to do anyways. This is a fix for the sewer line, which is ultimately what this whole debate is about. We're letting you know that we are going to begin contacting news agencies, local media outlets, the state government, the Goldwater Institute, as well as attorneys, in order to help achieve our ultimate desire of keeping our land. Please sit with us, and help us understand why this is the only way to achieve the result, because I know that you guys will hear that this is not the only way to achieve the result. Imagine how each of your reelection campaigns would benefit from saying that you helped stop an unnecessary and improper budget spend.
Our next speaker will be Greg Davis.
Good evening Mayor, council members, my name is Greg Davis, I live at 461 East Commerce, and I've lived there for 28 years. As Mr. Lewis says, he has four manholes in his property, if you go west, there's three more in Casey Ranch, there's one in Burke in the southbound lane, there's another one in some vacant land, and then the next one is in your park, so there's only three manholes that are behind the fence, and residents have given access for years to those manholes. I ask that you relook at that, because a manhole rehab is about the size of that table, the excavation is no more than 10 foot by 10 foot by four foot deep. On a personal note, I bought my land in 93 with the intent to have horses, I did, raised my kids, and now if I take that 21 feet away, I'll have no room for horses to graze, the intent was to have the grandkids come over and have horses, which I'm not real fond of, but we're going to supposedly have ponies. Horses are grazers, they need place to go, and all my neighbors have horses, and they're going to be in the same boat, horses are going to be penned up, no place to exercise, and I just hope that you look at the project, and we can come up with a solution that's other than buying land, thank you.
Our next speaker is Leslie, I apologize Leslie, I'm not quite sure how to pronounce your last name. Leslie Novak, thank you.
Thank you for giving me some time, and I appreciate it, I am also here to speak on the sewer project, and as I was thinking about what to say, you all have the statistics, you all can hear about what's going on, everything, 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 and what struck me as a teacher with little ones, one of the words that comes up is, on a daily basis, and I'm thinking that we are encountering this, that word a lot in this situation, and that word is lying, as students, I deal with it every day, on the importance of being honest, of being truthful, of being a better person, and I don't think that's happening here, unfortunately, I see a lot of our questions, and a lot of the times when we're talking, I've been watching you guys, and there's a lot of writing, and there's a lot of disconnectedness, which leads me to believe that lying to me is easy, not taking our concerns seriously is a form of lying, and the city has spent quite a bit of money on facilitating the lying of this project, and all the lies associated with this project. I am ashamed and embarrassed to live, work, and teach in a city that finds it so easy to facilitate lies, I am truly sorry to use that word, but I think that word is necessary, thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is Char Hawkins.
I am Char Hawkins, I live-
I live at 549 East Commerce, and I am a Gilbert native. I am a Gilbert native with Julia and with Arlen Lewis. I have lived here for 60, let's say 60-plus years. That's all I'll tell you. I went to Gilbert schools. I went to Gilbert Elementary in the original cottages that are still there, and classes are still being held in the original cottages. I went to Gilbert Junior High, which is, was on Gilbert Road, which is where the administration building is now. I went to Gilbert High School, where Mesquite Junior High is located now, back behind where the old bus barn used to be. I was let out of my classroom on Gilbert Road when, it was in the early '70s, when the very first stoplight was put in. Our classes were let out. I have seen, so we could watch the installment of the very first street light Gilbert ever had, back when it was two lanes. We all stood there and watched, as young, young people, the growth, I've seen the growth, the good growth in Gilbert. Today, I'm disappointed in my Gilbert. I'm a Gilbert girl, and I am so disappointed. I ask you to, I didn't even know that we were having this sewer rehabilitation until Charlie Grombacher of Jacobs Engineering showed up at my door at Christmas. No one in the town bothered to say anything to me about this project until Jacobs Engineering showed up at my door at Christmas, when it's been stated several times that you've known for years, at least since 2017. Thank you.
Thank you, Char. The council's response is going to be, is limited to responding to the criticism tonight or asking staff to review a matter commented upon or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Mayor Peterson will respond to some of the criticism.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I did say that we would plan a meeting, and we have been in the process of doing that. We had a very busy schedule for the past two weeks and just had no time to fit that meeting in. This week was not possible either, so we're looking at planning a meeting with all of you for next week. And I think I stated that, that we would be looking for the end of February, beginning of March, to be able to fit that meeting in due to all of our schedules. And trying to line up the seven people up here is not always an easy task. They all, most have jobs outside of this position that they do. So we have that meeting just about set. We were waiting for some confirmation from a couple of people, and we will hopefully get that information out to you tomorrow. And that's, I'm limited to how much I can respond this evening, so that's all. Thank you.
We'll move to the consent calendar. Councilmember Yentes has asked to discuss and vote separately on items 15A, 17, and 20. Are there any additional items council members would like to vote on separately? Okay, hearing none. We will ask for a motion on the consent calendar items that I repeat, and also bring up items 30 and 31, which I will state at the end. So I'll ask for a motion to approve items 3 through 15, 16, 18, 19, 21, 21A, 22, 23, 24, 24A, 24B, 24C, 25, and item 30, which is a motion to appoint to the Judicial Selection and Advisory Board Tyler Thomas, town resident member with an initial one-year term beginning February 16, 2021, and ending February 15, 2022; Juan Marcos Romero, town resident member with an initial two-year term beginning February 16, 2021, and ending February 15, 2023; Cherie Graham, town resident member with an initial three-year term beginning February 16, 2021, and ending February 15, 2024; Bradley Johnston, State Bar of Arizona member with a term beginning February 16, 2021, and ending February 15, 2024; Anne Mesa, Presiding Magistrate John Tatts as the municipal court magistrate with a term beginning February 16, 2021, and ending February 15, 2024; Adam Waltersen from Gilbert Municipal Court Administration with a term beginning February 16, 2021, and ending February 15, 2024; Tamika Hartman from the town of Gilbert with a term beginning February 16, 2021, and ending February 15, 2024; and these additional board members, Stephanie Lowe with a term beginning February 16, 2021, and ending February 15, 2023, and she's a State Bar of Arizona member; and Don Skousen, a town resident member with a term beginning February 16, 2021, and ending February 15, 2022; and Agenda Item 31, which is a motion to appoint to the Self-Insured Trust Board Courtney Bowles to fill the remainder of a term beginning February 16, 2021, and ending September 30, 2023. May I have a motion to approve those items?
Motion to approve.
Anna, do you have a second? Okay, sorry.
Yes.
Please vote. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Now we'll discuss item number 15A. Councilmember Yentes.
And Mayor, if I might take 15A and 20 together since they're related, but I was wondering if Melanie was available to answer any questions?
Councilmember Yentes, I am on the line if needed.
Thank you, Melanie. And more specific to the, I guess, the scope of the funds that are in consideration tonight, I was wondering if you had any information about how many households are, would be qualified under this? You know, specifically under, obviously, the program itself, but then the two contracts we have, the two contract providers. How many households in Gilbert would be qualified for this program?
Mayor, Councilmember Yentes, I don't have specifics on the number of households that would qualify at this point in time. I do know that when the Senate Cap Office did receive supporting funding through the county to provide this level of assistance in the past, they were able to support over 100 different households with assistance with the funding they provided. But again, these are specific to rent and utility assistance, and they do have to qualify at least at 80% AMI. And so therefore, it will just depend on the situation that they are in financially at this point in time in, you know, through COVID.
Okay, thank you. I guess my concern with this is more scope than anything. I mean, obviously, we know that there's people in our community who are hurting, people who are struggling to keep up with rent and utility and pay their mortgage and losing jobs. And I know through the initial tranche of CARES Act money, we are able to provide some assistance to nonprofits to address some of that specific need in our community. My concern is, I really would like to see, I guess, the demonstrable evidence. We have $7 million worth of rent and utility needs. I know some of the qualifications for the program itself, you know, are, you know, unemployment and being able to show that, you know, you're late on rent or utilities. But this is also benefits that are eligible for 12 months. So I would, because I am considerably concerned with the deficit spending at the federal level, you know, we're at, I think, around $28 trillion in debt and no slowing down of the spending of, and printing of money. I would just, I would feel more comfortable with this if I knew, I guess, what the scope of the need and that $7 million in our community, that's what it really is necessary to kind of address, you know, address that housing instability specific to, you know, what we've seen as a result of COVID. So for that reason, I know we have, we've got a couple contracts on the agenda for providers who I think do a fabulous job, but just understanding that, you know, we can't just keep spending our way into oblivion and my belief that we need to be, you know, more specific and scaled down scope of what we're spending those dollars on.
Thank you, Councilmember Yentes. Number 10, comment.
That's Marjorie Tulkey. Thank you, Councilmember Yentes. I appreciate your thought in that. I believe when I read through this, we have to do quarterly reports, and perhaps Melanie can pull out those numbers to help us feel more comfortable by the number of people that we're serving. But if I remember right, you are required to give money back that you don't spend. And so I think when we saw some of the other accountability reports from the other money that we received, we would be able to identify that. And if we weren't going to use it, we would give it back. And Melanie, you can probably confirm that, but I thought that's what I read.
Mayor, Councilmember Tulkey, thank you for that question. Yes, if we are not able or going to be spending all of the funds, we do have the ability to return them, and we are going to be doing quarterly reports. In addition, Councilmember Yentes, to identify, although you can pay tollments for it, that is not our intent at this point. We will only be doing three ones, and then there's going to be a recertification check of that family or individual that's requesting assistance to make sure they still are in need and qualify for financial assistance. So we don't intend to, you know, pay the tollments ahead. That although they allow for that, that is not a policy that we will be enacting.
I might just ask one more follow-up question, then. Is that, is that just not an option when you apply for the monies to say this is the need in the community and then draw down just that specific? Or, for me, that seems a little backward. I would think that's, we would start with the need and then, you know, only accept $2 million if that's what the need is required? Or instead of then going back and sending the money back?
Mayor, Councilmember Yentes, this was a formula allocation that was provided through the Treasury, and this was what was made available to us. We didn't have the opportunity, authorization to request a different amount at the time. This is what the formula allocation was determined for us.
Guess that's what's, one of the reasons what's wrong with our federal government.
Any other comments on item 15A or 20? Yes.
Just a quick question. These are COVID relief funds. Is that correct? Was this discussed at all in your subcommittee, Amy?
I mean, these are COVID relief funds in one way, shape, or form, but they wasn't a part of the initial CARES Act monies.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Can we have the voting board cleared? Thank you. We'll, we'll take the vote on items 15A and 20. Can we have a motion to approve these two items?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Please vote. That motion passes. Councilmember Yentes, item number 17.
Thank you, Mayor. So the original vote on this, this project for the renovation of Muni One was, was not something that I supported. I do see the necessity for some improvements to the building. Obviously, it's, it's an old building. And, you know, there's a lack of energy efficiency. There's obviously a lot of space that hasn't been utilized to, I guess, the best of its efficiency. But as far as kind of how this has been scoped right now, I really do think that this, it would be wise for us to scale back some of these improvements, especially considering I, you know, I was just recently briefed on this, but it looks like we're over budget on this. And so until we can kind of find ways to scale it back and get back into budget, I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable supporting it going forward. I think we need to find ways to kind of scale this back. And at this point, I think the redesign is a bit excessive to what is just basically necessary. It's nice, I think, the project. You know, the designs look very, very top-notch, very first-class, but, you know, while we're simultaneously looking at critical needs in our community, and then there are, you know, people in, in the town that are hurting, spending, you know, upwards of $16 million renovating the Muni building is not something that, in my opinion, is a top priority.
Any other comments from council members on item number 17? All right. Can we have a motion to approve item number 17?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Please vote. Motion passes. And that concludes the consent calendar. Mayor Peterson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That last vote passed with a 5-2 vote. Moving on to our public hearing agenda. Let me just get to the right page. I was flipping back and forth. We have a request for a couple of items to be discussed this evening. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to discuss 26 and 27 separately? I've heard of 28 and 29, I mean, 28 and 28A to be separate. Okay. Then I'll, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion for 26 and 27, if anyone liked to make that.
I move to approve those items.
Second.
Please vote. Those two items pass with a 7-0 vote. Moving on to item number 28, zoning Z20-10. I believe Councilmember Hendricks had some comments or questions on that item.
Just comments, thank you, Mayor. I'm concerned on 28. It's consistency that we're showing to our citizens and our residents, voters. When asking staff to explain what this, what this will accomplish when we vote on this, they gave me two primary points. One, it will expand the permissible square footage that can be used for activities related to marijuana. It'll approximately double it, I believe, it's 2,500 square feet to 5,000 feet is permitted. The second primary issue that it covers is there are some security requirements that are duplicative with some of the state laws. And it'll eliminate those, so they're not duplicative. And where my concern comes from is, I fully support this issue, and I planned to vote for it. But where my concern comes from is we're voting to essentially double the availability of marijuana for a commercial, a commercial site. So we're protecting the property rights of the owner for this commercial property, which I completely support. A month ago, we changed our building code as it relates to residential properties. And one of the comments from the DIAS was that we need to do everything we can to limit the use, expansion of marijuana and the elements that it brings. From the DIAS, we pretty much acknowledged the purpose of changing the residential building code was to subvert Proposition 207, which whether we like it or not, is state law. Just like when I speed on the freeway. I don't like the speeding laws, but that's the law. So it concerns me that a month ago, we felt that it was a priority to limit the use of marijuana, the cultivation of marijuana, and anything else related to marijuana. Yet today, I assume this will pass. I hope it passes. And today, we're doubling the availability in a commercial structure when we're trying to stop it in a residential structure. The second issue that staff explained was in this issue we're voting on tonight was the security requirements that we're going to remove because they're duplicative with state law. The discussion a month ago was that we were creating code that was duplicative with state law, and state law already protected some of the hazards that we wanted to make sure didn't occur on a residential property. So a month ago, when we're dealing with residential building code, we tell our residents that, in fact, the statement was made from the DIAS, that many times there are duplicative statutes, state, federal, municipal, and that's acceptable, and it's normal. Today, on a commercial property, we've decided it's important to take half of what's written here, to remove duplicative requirements, as I understand, related to security. I find it hypocritical on one stance where we state from the DIAS that it's acceptable to have duplicative statutes, may or may not be consistent with one another, and that we need to do all we can to limit marijuana and the elements that it purportedly brings, regardless of state law that we just passed as voters in the state of Arizona. I find these in conflict. With all due respect to my colleagues on the DIAS here, I know that we all examine these issues and we vote on them as we see appropriate. But with this kind of inconsistency, the only way I can see that it's consistent is if we look at residential properties, that it's not important to protect their property rights. It's not important to allow them to take advantage of state laws, whether we personally agree with them or not. And I have to wonder, are we not as concerned about private property rights for residential homes? Because in general, they don't hire a lobbyist, and they don't come down here and talk and complain, and they don't donate to campaigns, for the most part, in any significant amount. But we're talking about a commercial property where it's very important to protect the private property rights and double the use of their property for the purposes of marketing marijuana, whatever else they're going to do in this structure. And the only way to make consistency is we're doing that because we see the commercial property rights as more significant than the private. The commercial property rights have hired lobbyists, they have hired attorneys, they make significant contributions to politicians when they run for office. And I hope that consistency is incorrect, and there are other reasons why we would support the property rights of the commercial property and not of the residential property. I voted previously a month ago in favor of protecting property rights for the residential homeowner, although it passed by a 6 to 1 vote, and I'll vote again tonight to protect the property rights of the commercial property owner. Although I do not support the expansion of marijuana, I didn't support Prop 207, but it is the law. I will vote in favor of this in support of the property rights of the commercial property owner.
Vice Mayor? I have a question for staff on this item as to whether these amendments to code are required due to the Smart and Safe Act, or whether they are optional.
Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Kaprowski, I guess I don't understand. Could you clarify the question? This is Josh Rogers. I apologize, with staff.
Hi, Josh. My question is, for adopting or creating this ordinance to amend the Land Development Code, was this a requirement based on Prop 207, which is the Smart and Safe Act, or is this something that the town evaluated and decided upon separately?
Okay. I understand. Mayor, Vice Mayor, this is something that the town had, has been researching in preparation from, actually, a couple of months before this was even voted on, and we did decide that it was in the town's best interest to reevaluate our code and just bring it up to par with the new regulations and standards set forth in Prop 207. So it wasn't required, but it was in the town's best interest to make sure that it, our code aligned and meshed with the Prop 207 language.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, may I add to that as well, that the proposed changes in the Land Development Code are conforming changes to the town's decision in October to prohibit standalone recreational marijuana facilities other than what's required or by Prop 207 with a dual licensee. And that's why these code changes are being made in response to the council's decision. If the council were to revisit that at some point and allow recreational, then we would make and bring additional changes to conform to that policy as well.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I, I don't want to belabor this, but I would disagree that what we passed two weeks ago actually protects the homeowner more, from my perspective, and this evening, we're looking at one user in the town of Gilbert. There's only one facility that this actually will affect. We don't have, I think there's a second opportunity to have a second dispensary in Gilbert, but there isn't one right now, there's only one. And this dispensary under Prop 207 is able to provide medical marijuana along with recreational marijuana, and in their location, they wouldn't be able to do so based on the size of the space that they have and what's been allocated by our code. And so this would give them the opportunity to provide that. I prefer to have a business in Gilbert that's providing the medical and recreational marijuana to our residents than our residents growing it themselves. So if this business is very popular, which I know that it is, and takes in, I think it's the highest-earning location in the state, that's better from my perspective for all of our residents, because then the residents won't be tempted to be growing the plants in their home. And what we passed two weeks ago did not change in any way, the number of plants that people can grow, it just protects neighbors and the people growing it, and if there's an issue, it's protection for them if the town needs to step in. So there's protection in place for everyone. I think I said that properly. And I don't remember if I opened the public hearing, so open the public hearing for this item as we're discussing it, and bring it back to the DIAS. Any other comments or questions? Then I would entertain a motion on item 28. You know what? I'll go ahead and move to approve item number 28.
I'll second.
Motion by Peterson, seconded by Tilke. I'll vote, please. And it passes 7-0. Thank you. Next item, public hearing still open, I'm still getting used to this. Item 28A, Code of Gilbert, and Councilmember Tilke, you had some comments on this.
Thank you, Mayor. When I read the ordinance, there was a piece that I felt maybe we needed to clarify a little bit better. So if it's all right, I would like to read the way that I would propose that it should be, and then I'll make a separate motion just listing the change so that you can see in its total form. But it's Section B5, and it, I'm going to, again, include my changes in this. "Any other cause concerning business honesty, integrity, or serious poor performance of a character which is deemed to be so serious as to justify suspension or debarment, including suspension or debarment of such contractor or any subsidiary or affiliate of such contractor by another governmental entity." I felt that without the additional words, that when we just say "any other cause," it really opens it up to, we could dispar a contractor based on rumor, political pressure. It didn't really have anything about why we would do it, other than just any other cause. So the motion I'd like to make is, I move to approve item 2A as proposed with the following change to subsection B5, adding of a character which is deemed to be so serious as to justify suspension or debarment immediately after serious poor performance.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Vice Mayor. Please vote. And Councilmember Tilke did have that approved by our town attorney. Thank you. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to our administrative items this evening. We have item number 29, Council Administration, consider acceptance of the budget report and contingency report. Does that take a motion, or do we just need to say that we accept it? Sorry.
Mayor, motion would be needed.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember September. Please vote. Vote passes 7-0. Thank you. And we handled the next item during our consent and the following item for boards and commissions, and now reports from council liaisons on boards, commissions, and committees. Do we have any this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to policy items. We have none. Future meetings. We mentioned earlier in the evening tonight that we are scheduling a meeting for next week, and hopefully we'll get that information out tomorrow. And now a report from our town manager.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, nothing to report tonight.
Nothing to report tonight. Wow. Report from council on current events. Anybody? Anything? A report from the mayor. I will, again, thank you all for participating in our retreat. It was very beneficial for us and for staff, I think, to move forward with a lot of projects that are going on last week. I know it was a couple of long days and very appreciated by all of us. That's all I have this evening, and I will recess our regular meeting and reconvene in the exec session. Thank you.